The name of Jesus is the name of all. I pray to God that He will bring me to Him. Hallelujah! And I am grateful for the Lord's love and His mercy. I pray that He will bring me to Him. And I am grateful for the Lord's mercy. And I am grateful that He has brought me to this place. And I am grateful that He has brought me to this place. I pray that He will bring me to Him. For I am grateful. Today, I am grateful that He has brought me to this place. But it is so encouraging. And I also encourage you to continue like that. We young men are the new sacros when the old banana trees will be dead. Send him out. The young man, the young man who will take over, will be the one to pray. And I am also happy to be among you youths. I am still a young man. The fact that I am married doesn't mean that I am not worthy. When I wake up, I can still be in your company. Because we are the people who will take this message. You know, back then, old men used to tell young men that, "No, you just follow us. Just follow us and learn." But today, those old men are telling the same young men that, "You know what? We are looking at you because now it is you who will take us to that height." When the apostle was writing, John, in one of his letters, he said that, "I am writing to you, young man, because you are strong in the Lord and because you have overcome the evil one." Now, when the Bible says, "Call you young man," it doesn't leave ladies out. In fact, when the Bible says, "I am writing to you, young man," it is inclusive of also ladies. A lady, in the biblical context, you are referred as a man. That's why you will never read in the Bible anything like,[243.20][243.84]"Notas of God. We are all sons of God." Amen? So, when the Bible says, "I am writing to you, young man," it is like a woman who wants to tell her father, "Bunny, hear me, inclusive of any woman." To give you a reminder, there were many revivals that took place in those years. There had been Welsh Revival, Azusa Street Revival, and the Vanancole Revival, which became Ronald. These revivals, the people who were then used by God in these revivals, they were just young men. They were young men who had that burden in their hearts for God to send revival. If I may give you just some highlights about some of these revivals, there was one revival, which is one of the biggest revivals that happened in the history of the church. It was called the Welsh Revival and the Azusa Street Revival. The Azusa Street Revival, God used someone by the name William Seymour. William Seymour, during those days, there was a lot of segregation between the whites and the blacks. So, the whites, whenever they held their meeting, they would close the doors so that no black person could enter inside. And so, when they were doing this, one day, in a house in a street called Azusa, down in California, there was a young man who was seated, he was a coal miner, and he was a one-eyed young man, who was seated outside the door. But this young man, he also, he also spoke very highly of his brother, he spoke very highly of the white. But the whites, they were very angry with him. They were very angry with him. But this young man, he also spoke very highly of his brother, he spoke very highly of the white. But the whites, they were very angry with him. They were very angry with him. Because of this, the Spirit of God came. He spoke very highly of the white. He spoke very highly of the white. And he spoke very highly of the black. He spoke for hours and times. And he was just a coal miner. And they said, "During those days, coal miners, they spoke very highly of the black." So, if they spoke very highly of the black, how can this happen? The Holy Spirit spoke very highly of the black. He spoke very highly of the black. And they said, "From that time, I will be a class of this." And I will allow the young to come with me. So, when William Seymour received the Holy Spirit, the white spoke very highly of this during the Azusa Street Revival. And during this Azusa Street Revival, he was very proud of the revival. And if you read about the Azusa Street Revival, how God used this young man, he spoke very highly of the white. 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 And he spoke very highly of the white. 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 There is a story where the white spoke very highly of the white. He spoke very highly of the white. And during that time, he spoke very highly of the white. He spoke very highly of the white. And he spoke very highly of the white. And during these Azusa Street Revivals, the white spoke very highly of the white. He 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 is so much special than you before God. No! Okay, so in the book of Acts, it speaks of miracles, it is written in the book. And it was not a big deal in the church because miracles, signs and wonders, those are part of a believer. In fact, everybody who has believed the gospel, miracles, signs and wonders should be part of you. You shouldn't be the one going for them. They should be part of you. In fact, you should be the one commanding them. Goodness gracious! The Azusa Street Revival, it is written, that the white spoke very highly of it. And that is why I encourage you also, young men. You should not speak very highly of the white. It is good to do it because, there is a name that is written in the Bible. And it is written that the white spoke very highly of this. So, when the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. And he spoke very highly of Alexander. He spoke very highly of the white. And they said, "This is a white who spoke very highly of the Azusa Street Revival." And they said, "Because they had never witnessed such revivals." The first awakening revivals, they are written in the book, 1700s. So, they spoke very highly of this revival. So, when the Azusa Street Revival happened, it was written very highly of the white. There is a testimony of a God pastor, a pastor named King George. King George lived one year without sleeping. One whole year without sleeping, during the month. He spoke very highly of the month. Just for God to send again revival. There was a woman who prayed for four consecutive months without sleeping for God to send revival. So, when the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. Because he spoke very highly of the white. By the way, he spoke very highly of the white. The white spoke very highly of the white. When now, the month is not to be passed on. A sensitive minister always is aware. Just like Eli, when the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. The white spoke very highly of the white. So, a sensitive minister will always know, "Now my time in the field is now coming to an end." I confirm, in the Bible, Moses spoke to Moses, Joshua spoke to Joshua, Elijah spoke to Elijah. He spoke very highly of the white. So, when he spoke, he spoke in one of their meetings. "Who will... I want you to pray for God to send revival." And he spoke, "Who will pray for revival?" And the young man spoke for 24 years. He spoke very highly of Ivan Roberts. He said, "I promise you, I will pray for revival." So, now Alexander, the white, said, "May God give you that money." And truly, God gave him that money. He spent three consecutive months without sleeping for God to send the revival. Let me tell you. When the revival happened here in the city of Wales, brothers, if you can get those histories and read them, there was no revival that could be recorded like this. It was so powerful. When the Spirit of God was just moving in the churches and in the hands of people, people were burning with desire just to be in the presence of God. There is a testimony that Ivan Roberts, who was born, spoke very highly of the white. He spoke very highly of the white. He spoke very highly of the white. No, he spoke very highly of the white. And when they spoke, they spoke very highly of the white. By the white, the holy spirit spoke very highly of this. He spoke very highly of this. When the white spoke, people whose hearts were really burning just to be in the presence of God. And when the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. 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 One week, he spoke very highly of the white. People were just praying. And those are the times when songs were coming up by the Holy Spirit. The songs, they are spoken to naive, "What a friend we have in Jesus." Those were songs that were just coming. A lady then filled with the Holy Spirit in the meeting. And she said, "To you, my friend." And every word, she enjoyed very much. But when they spoke, the whole congregation, they were catching up now. The whites were just coming and speaking very highly of the Lord. When the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. Because the white spoke very highly of the white. And every home, every school, every empty space, he spoke very highly of the white. And when the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. He spoke very highly of the white. Because the white spoke very highly of the white. And God was filling them with the Holy Spirit. The white spoke very highly of the white. Because the church was speaking of prayer meetings. "Why am I bringing all this?" When I saw how the youths are dedicated and saw their zeal to be in the house of God, I was just encouraging you, when the revival happened. Yes, the revival happened. It was written in the book, "The Holy Ghost is with us." Hallelujah! It was written in the book, "The Holy Ghost is with us." And when the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. Like Ivan Roberts, he was just 24 years old. There was a revival in East Africa, near the island of Rwanda. When the white spoke, but when the revival happened in Rwanda, when the white spoke, he witnessed very highly of the revival in Anglican. And I would say, when you're trying to talk about revival between Anglican and Catholic, Anglican, they know it better than Catholic. Because when the white spoke, the revival happened in Rwanda in 1935. He spoke very highly of Uganda. He spoke very highly of Uganda. He spoke very highly of the island of Rwanda. The island of Rwanda, because the white spoke very highly of the white. And he spoke very highly of the white. So, when the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. (Singing) "To tend the reza, yesu, yesu, oh, lingwa na weniga, oh, sa, igogo na zinza, ha, niye ba, sa, oh, lokosi." When the white spoke, that song was being sung. And I can give you homework. But when you start singing that song, when you start singing that song, you will feel like you are doing something wrong. And you will learn from it. And you will study the lyrics and you will learn from it. Because they are remembering how the power of God was during those times, how they worked with the power of God, how people dedicated their lives to work with God. So, that is why Elder John and Annika said, "I am writing to you, young man, because you have overcome the evil one." Goodness gracious! I was just encouraging the youths. This week, I prepared so much to teach on a certain subject, which I gave a heading. Why we don't receive what God has delivered in our lives? But I really prepared and I did more studying to it. And I was really prepared. But to my surprise, it just evaporated. And then, in the course of the week, God put another topic in my heart to preach it. So, God knows why he has done that. And come, there is a prayer, the white speaks. Goodness gracious! When the white spoke, he spoke about the movement of the spirit. The movement of the spirit. In the end, it is good to understand what the Bible means when the Bible talks about the movement of the spirit. And it is also good to understand what this movement of the spirit is. Because when we don't understand the movement of the spirit according to the Scripture, we will end up, or we may end up believing every spirit to be of God. And yet, the Bible says that we must test these spirits, whether they be of God. Because there are just so many spirits outside there. There are so many spirits outside there disguising themselves as the spirits of God. The devil is outside there disguising himself as the angel of light. So, when you are not serious, you might end up swallowing everything and accepting everything as being the spirit of God. When the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. He spoke very highly of the white. I am a brother, a brother, a brother. And he spoke very highly of the white. He spoke very highly of the bishop, Cosma Salaba, and Mama Reverend Yunes Salama. And depending on the month, the month, the Genesis chapter 1. Genesis chapter 1. And I think, 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 when the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. 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 And he spoke very highly of the white. The reason is why the believers in Berea were called wise. Not that because they believed in what apostle Paul preached, but it was because they checked what Paul preached by the Scriptures, if it was so. So, what makes you wise is if you can check every word that has come out of the mouth of the preacher by the Scriptures. Hallelujah! So, when the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. The Bible says, "The white spoke very highly of the white." It is written in the Bible. In Genesis chapter 1, from verse 1, I want to read it to verse 3. The Bible says, "In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth, and the earth was without form and void; and the darkness was upon the face of the deep; and the spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters. And God said, 'Let there be light,' and there was light." In our today's Bible study about the movement of the spirit, the Bible begins by giving us the first record where the spirit of God was first recorded and the word of God was first recorded in the beginning. And the first time the spirit of God was recorded, the Bible says it was hovering or it was moving. Another version says it was moving swiftly over the face of the waters. In the Luhua version, the Luhua version says that, "A row of marina say, 'Ne puyo ewe pi.'" Ne puyo, can you say ne puyo? Ne puyo ewe pi. Now, puyo, puyo, don't mistake puyo by fuyo. There is fuyo and puyo. Fuyo is wandering, wandering. A wandering person, a wandering person. But here, the Bible says that the spirit of God, ne puyo ewe pi. Amen? I don't know if I'm right, and you will correct me. But in Luhua, you say, "Ho burra." Ho burra, juya maji. It is written in the Bible, the meaning of life. Ho burra, juya maji. And I think, you can understand it very well when I say, "Adiaka fiyo, iko ro ma." Yeah? It is written in the book, "Juya maji," my right? I hope you understand what I'm trying to say. I think I said my yes. Now, the spirit of God in Luhua, the Bible says, "Ne puyo ewe pi." The original Kisweile version will tell you that it is written, "Inaenda kwa kasi, juya maji." Amen? When the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. When the white spoke, he spoke very highly of the white. And he spoke very highly of the word of God. "The spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters; and God said, 'Let there be light.'" That was God's word. In other words, the spirit of God, the first time it was recorded, it was recorded moving with the word of God. It was not moving alone. It was moving with the word of God. And when that word of God also followed him, the Bible says, "There was light in darkness." Now, that light or that darkness meant that, just like in our last time Bible study, we learned that the Bible or the Scriptures, it has its own words. You don't go and check for Bible words in your English dictionary. You will miss everything. If you check the words in the Bible using your English dictionary, you will miss everything because you will not get the exact meaning of what was being communicated. When the Bible was first written in Hebrew and Greek, it was never written, English was not yet born by that time. Amen? English was not yet born by that time when the Bible was first written. And when English came many years later, it did not have, it was not rich in vocabularies to replace or to translate the original words that were used. Goodness gracious! Because, and again, when the Bible, when the Scriptures were written or when the prophets were speaking, they were using proverbs. They were using ideals, just like I told you last time. And there were so many manners of speech that they were using that the people they were communicating to... that the people they were communicating to, by that time, they were understanding them. So today, a Bible student will need someone who understands the meaning of the proverbs that were used by that time and bring out what it meant. Hallelujah. Yes. And we know that Genesis, the first books of the Bible, they were written by Moses. And you should know that it was not Moses writing them alone by himself. Moses was working in that company, there were also scribes who were helping him to write. That is why when you read the Bible, you'll read somewhere that says, "And Moses, the servant of God, was no more." But the story still continues. So you should ask yourself, who was writing the continuation of that story? So when in the book of Genesis, Moses, after saving the children of Israel, he was now the one narrating to them what happened from the beginning. And because of their hard hearts, they're difficult in understanding. Even Jesus Christ said that because of your hard necks, because of your rebellious hearts, Moses spoke to you in the manner that he used so that you would understand him. That is why Genesis, where we have just read chapter one, it is talking, it is not talking directly. What is being discussed there? There is something that is hidden. Blessed be the name of the living God. There is something, it is a manner of speech that Moses was using to talk to those people. That's why when we read in Genesis about even the fall of man, the dematerial of man, you will never hear the word Satan. Because those people by then, they could not understand Satan, what is Satan. So Moses had to use the word serpent. Hallelujah. Moses had to use the word serpent for them to understand. So where we just read, the Bible says that in the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth, and the earth was without form and void; and the darkness was upon the face of the deep, and the spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters. And God said, "Let there be light," and there was light. Now, the deep in that context doesn't mean deep waters. The deep there means the heart of men. The waters there means nations. It was the heart of man who has rejected God or God's provision for his salvation. That heart became formless. It was void and it was darkness. Darkness there meant death. Death ruled in the hearts of man. Hallelujah. Across all the nations, the spirit of God was hovering on how he can save man. And then, that is when God said, "Let there be light." The light there is not the light of the sun. I want you to understand that. The light there was not the light of the sun. That light Kisweli calls it nuru, not mungaza. Hallelujah. That Kisweli, the Kisweli one for that word, calls it nuru. Nuru, nito fauti na mungaza. Okiskiya komba, Kristo inasema komba ye ye nuru wa olinwebo. Asedi komba ye ye mungaza olinwebo. Tunacho kiona hapa u ni mungaza. Hallelujah. So light there, light there was God, he was talking about a person that came to that heart and brought light. That light there, light there means light. So for the first time, the spirit of God moved and the word of God followed. It brought light where there was death. Hallelujah. And that is how the heart of an unbeliever is. If you have not still believed the gospel, you have been preached to, you have seen all the demonstrations of the power of God, but still you have not believed the gospel. In fact, when God sees you, he sees that you still have that rebellious heart. Now, when you still have that rebellious heart, it shows that what is still abiding in you is dead. Though you have a name that you are alive, but you are dead. Anybody who has not believed the gospel of Jesus Christ, it doesn't matter how well you are bringing life, it doesn't matter how good you are in education, it doesn't matter all those, it doesn't matter how dedicated you are in church services. You can be following your parents to church until people know you as a brother or a sister. But there is not any day, you know yourself, there is not any day you have made a decision that you want to believe the gospel. The Bible says that though you have a name that you are alive, you are dead. Hallelujah. And when God sees your heart, there is no light in your heart. Your heart is still formless, it is void, total darkness is there. Total death is there. Your heart still have an incurable disease, a disease that no doctor can cure. A disease that nobody can cure. It is only the word of God that can heal or cure that disease. Hallelujah. So that is the nature of the soul or of the heart of a man who has not believed the gospel. You might say that you help the poor, it is good to help the poor. You might say that you want to get into charity work, it is good to get into charity work. But all those will not help you one day when you will stand before the mercy seat of God. What will stand before you and the mercy seat of God is whether you believe the gospel or not. Hallelujah. The Bible says that whosoever believes is saved. But whatsoever we don't believe is condemned. In other words, your judgment is already happened. So you don't wait for another judgment, you have already judged yourself. By not believing the gospel, you are walking under judgment. You are just walking, you are alive, but judgment is hanging on you. You are walking, but there is a very heavy load of judgment going with you. It is going with you, it is going with you. My brother, if you not believe the gospel, this is the time to believe the gospel. Hallelujah. So that was the first move of the spirit of God. In other words, the spirit of God cannot operate where there is no word of God. And the word of God cannot operate where there is no spirit of God. These two are one, and these two, you cannot segregate them. Amen? You cannot segregate them. But God, through his prophet, he promised that there will be a time when he will send another move of the spirit. For those who have joined us lately, our topic for today is the move of the spirit. And our main scripture is Genesis one. God promised that he will send another move, he will cause another move of the spirit. Amen? Through his prophet John, let's read prophet John. If you are, if you come from UK, you can open John. If you come from Africa, you can open Joy. Now, we Africans are blessed because we read everything. Even the silent letters, we just read the joy. Uwanda shangawa kina kini da Lewis. Aweju komba iyo esbe silent, Lewis. Because nidi kuja kiamwa kani ndia komba eh, loving mungu. Okay, can you, can you call Lewis? Ah, Lewis Neferdari. That's what I say my Lewis, but na kalia, aweju komba iyo esbe silent. So Joy, it is John. We shall read the Joy of chapter two, where God promised another move of the spirit. Verse twenty-eight, the Bible says, "And it shall come to pass afterward that I will pour out my spirit upon all flesh; and your sons and your daughters shall prophesy; your old men shall dream dreams; your young men shall see visions; and also upon the servants and upon the handmaids; in those days will I pour out my spirit." Hallelujah. Here, it was God speaking through his prophet about another move of the spirit. I want you to understand that in the Old Testament, the Holy Spirit had never been given. And I want you to understand that the prophets in the Old Testament, none of them was filled with the Holy Spirit. Mark that. None of them was filled with the Holy Spirit. Amen? Because the Holy Spirit had not yet been given. It was a promise that God would pour upon all people. A day is coming. But you may wonder, people like, what were they working under? They were working by faith. And the Holy Spirit was just an anointing to them. There is difference between being anointed and being filled. Hallelujah. Let's read Hebrews chapter eleven. Hebrews chapter eleven. Remember, we are in the Bible study. When we read Hebrews chapter eleven, I want you, when you go home, read it all, I just want you to take a little portion from verse thirty-two. The writer of Hebrews says this, "And what shall I more say? For the time will fail me to tell of Gideon and of Barak and of Samson and of Japhet, of David also, and Samuel, and of the prophets." When he says, "And of the prophets," it include Elijah there. What shall I say? Time will cut me short. There are much to be said about these men. Listen to their testimonies. These men who through faith subdued kingdoms, rode righteousness, obtained promises, stung the mouth of lions, quenched the violence of fire, escaped the edge of the sword, out of weakness were made strong and worked various in fight, turned to flight the armies of the aliens; women received their dead, raised to life again; and others were tortured, not accepting deliverance, that they might obtain a better resurrection; and others had trials of cruel mockings and scourging. Yeah, mob of fools and imprisonment. They were stoned, they were sold asana, like Isaiah was sold asana, Amzumeno. Were tempted, were slain with the sword. They wandered about in sheepskin and goatskin, being destitute, afflicted, tormented, of whom the world was not worthy. They wandered in deserts and in mountains and in dens and came for the ark. And this all, mark that word, and this all, having obtained a good report through faith, received not the promise. Despite, they did all that through faith, but they died without receiving the promise. Why? Because God, having provided some, some better thing for us that they, without us, should not be made perfect. The Old Testament prophets, they were working by faith. It was by faith that Moses could take a rod and strike the Red Sea and part it. It was by faith that Moses, that Elijah could set fire from heaven. It was by faith that Gideon could go and defeat their armies. It was by faith that they did all that. But despite that, the Bible says that they died without receiving the promise because the promise was not for them. They also died, when they were living, the Bible says that they searched what manner of these things that God would give to those whom he loves. They were searching, hallelujah. They died, they were living. Wa kiwana ile tama, biawao, wa onje. Wa onje, the experience of being filled with the Holy Spirit. The experience of being filled with the Holy Spirit, it means that the God who created the heaven and the earth, that God is coming to make his abode in a man. Hallelujah. So they lived, desiring for that moment to happen to them. But God told them, "No, it is not your time." This, I have prepared it for some people. Hallelujah. For God has prepared something better for us. Let me tell you brothers who are in Christ Jesus, you are feeling the Holy Spirit. And that Holy Spirit in you is God himself in you. The Bible says that your body is the temple of God. Hallelujah. God is not living in heaven, he's living in you, and you should be rejoicing on that. Hallelujah. So those prophets, what was happening to them? They were working under an anointing, not under the infilling of the Holy Spirit. You might ask me what happened to Saul. Let's go to first Samuel, chapter ten. First Samuel, chapter ten, and see what happened to Saul. And remember, where we have just read in John, the Bible says that, "And it shall come to pass when I will pour out my spirit upon all flesh." And I read that word, upon all flesh, then we go to first Samuel, chapter ten. Are you there? First Samuel, chapter ten. This is the story of a young man by the name Saul and prophet Samuel. You will go and read it all, the new sequence included what if he gave in that song. Let's read from a fight. "After that, thou shalt come to the hill of God, where is the garrison of the Philistines; and it shall come to pass, when thou art come thither to the city, that thou shalt meet a camp..." to the city, that thou shalt meet a company of prophets, coming down from the high place with a salt tree, and a tablet, and a pipe, and a harp, before them, and they shall prophesy. And the spirit of the Lord will come upon thee, and thou shalt prophesy with them, and shall be turned into another man." Did God confirm it? I have been a thorn in the flesh of some ministers, but I don't mean to be a thorn to them, I'm just your brother. Because, me ta fili zatuma swadi. Muigine alimite sia vijana waki awi. Na kantam sema. This is my old elder son, the prophet so-and-so. And who you have, the apostle so-and-so. So, okay, oh, that's wonderful, wow. So, can you tell, give me a testimony of how they became apostles and prophets? Believe it or not, my brethren, this old preacher could not even defer to that. He could not defer, and that's why he is calling his son prophet and an apostle. Many people think that telling you your future and your past makes them prophets. No. That is not what it means to be a prophet. Telling you your future and your past, anybody who speaks with the Holy Spirit can know that, and you can know your future and your past. You can know your future, how it is going to be. There was this young man, the son of Saul, called Jonathan. Alikwenda David akamambia komba, you know, my father knows that you will be the king in Israel. But promise me that you will be the king in Israel, I will be your deputy. And they made an oath, they really promised him. So, Jonathan was walking at Kijua, when his future would be. One day, we will know why the sins of Jonathan. So, let nobody just come and tell you, just because somebody tells you, told you, komba, okay. Eh, keshu tapata kazi, na kapata kazi, it makes him a prophet. No. A prophet, in the word of God, must be someone who is ready to expound the scriptures and bring out Christ to you. Someone who is ready to give you the word that will edify you, that will perfect you. The Bible says, to Samuel, give them a letter, apostles, prophets, evangelists, pastors and teachers, for the perfecting of the ministry. Hallelujah. For the perfecting of the work of the ministry, and, and for the perfecting of the saints, and for the edification of the church, of the body. So, mutasija komba, just because an joke happened yesterday. That's why they come with a prophet. Now, okay, earlier, these young prophets, they take advantage of people whereby they, they work in people's houses just because they are the prophet of God. Because they are not patient, they know how to wait upon the Lord. That's a do, that's a natumiya, to pay the account of a good door. The former Jeffrey from Uke, Omeisha. Omeisha. So, young prophets, so-called prophets in the field, go back to your fathers. Such prophets, they are what they call as the shooting star. Do you know a shooting star? Omeisha way, quite kind, you can have a shooting star in the land. You're falling stars. In a, the one that shoot my target. Very beautiful and bright colors, lakilipe yemea mukia, ajuwi. That is why today, these young ministers in the field who did not learn patience. Leo, he utawaku, tawaku very powerful in the ministry. Lakino opatiye muda. Opatiye muda. Ata ukafora oskia. Nasi tuwa me kufa. Wa kudu. Sia tuwa me kufa, wa kudu. The Bible says, "Tarry until you are a Jew." Hallelujah. Doesn't mean that when you know how to expound scriptures, it's just a way to talk, way to achieve. Ministry ako. And I do say this, ma'am, I'm still waiting for you, and I'm still killing it. Amen. It is good to wait, brothers. Hallelujah. When we wait upon the Lord, the Bible says that he will renew our strength, and he will make us able to sew up with wings as eagles. So, Jesus told them to wait. It is a good thing to wait upon the Lord before you start going out to evangelize. Wait until you get that infilling of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Because Jesus Christ called the twelve apostles. Yes, he called them. And there were times they could send them to go and do miracles, and they could come back with reports. Are you aware that as they were doing those miracles, are you aware of what Judas was among them? But he was called. He was among them, and Judas was also coming back with testimonies, how, how devils were obeying them, you see? But it reached a time where that, where that call had to be confirmed. That commission had to be confirmed. Judas was not there. Bwana buzo. I want you to see how these people. Sejene wekati nata kanga mi. Eh? Oh, what a majizi. I want you to see how these people, they were truly patient. Ujokoba Judas alikuwa bishop. Yeah, Judas alikuwa bishop. Now, mimi na opatiya tukuamba, ndeni, musome 1, 1, 1 act, the book of Acts, chapter 1. Mutasikia Jesse Pedro, anasimama, anasema kamba, Ephesians 16, "Many brethren, this scripture must needs have been fulfilled with the Holy Ghost by the mouth of David's speck before concerning Judas, which was guided to them that took Jesus, for he was number with us, and I abstained." But obviously now, this man purchased, saunu ukisoku kete ne ambene, otaskia come up, mania netwaji. Eh, Peter, anasema kamba, eh, anasema kamba. We have to choose another person to take up his bishop ring. To take up this bishop ring. So, Judas was a bishop in that charge. So, I want just to finish, let you see how these people, they were patient. The Bible says that when the day of the cross had fully come, and they were gathered in one place, there are things that happened. The first thing that happened, the Bible says in verse 2, "And suddenly there came a sound from heaven as of a rushing mighty wind, and it filled all the house where they were sitting." In your Bible, you can see that comma. Verse 3, "And there appeared unto them gloving tongues like a fire, and sat upon each of them." Comma. Verse 4, "And they were all filled with the Holy Ghost, and began to speak with other tongues, as the Spirit gave them others." These people, they were told not to go and, and wait for all those activities. They were specifically told to go and wait until they were filled with power from on high. So, as they were waiting, the Bible says that there came a sound as of a mighty wind that filled the house. Now, that sound of a great wind was not the Holy Ghost. I want you to understand that. That sound of a mighty wind was not the Holy Ghost. After the wind, then gloving tongues as of fire sat upon them. That was not the Holy Ghost. After that, is when they were filled with the Holy Ghost. Is when they were moved to speak with new tongues, and they started preaching. Hallelujah. Last, last, open 1 Kings chapter 19, as I close. With, with, with preachers, we are used, we are blessed with this, as I close, as I close. Okay, as I, as my, my last, but it is my last. 1 Kings chapter 19. When you go to your house, you read it all. 1 Kings chapter 19, from verse 11. The Bible says, "And he said, 'Go forth and stand upon the mount before the Lord.' And behold, the Lord passed by, and a great and a strong wind raked the mountains, and breaking pieces the rocks before the Lord; but the Lord was not in the wind.' And after the wind, an earthquake; but the Lord was not in the earthquake. And after the earthquake, a fire; but the Lord was not in the fire. And after the fire, a still small voice. And it was so, when Elijah heard it, that he wrapped his vest and his mantle, and went out and stood in the entering, in the inn of the cave. And beyond there came a voice unto him, and said, 'What wast thou here, Elijah?' Remember, first Elijah, what happened in the, in the day of the cross was what had happened here. First the wind, and then fire, is when the Holy Ghost. Elijah, it was first the wind, then the earthquake, then the fire, and then God was not in there at all. Is when God spoke, hallelujah. Is when God spoke. And if you look at Elijah, Elijah was first called and this tall, go and stand, but was not moved. Then, they follow those activities. Then, when the word of God now came to confirm it, is when the Bible says that he went and stood at the opening of the cave, and the voice came again and confirmed it. What are you doing here? So, my brothers, as I finish, and I call my brother to come and take over, I want to, the topic about the moving, the move of the spirit is a compound, and I cannot say that I have finished it. God willing, one day it will continue. So, it is good to wait upon the Lord, and it is good to wait until your confirmation is done. Hallelujah. You don't just go up there without being confirmed. You don't just walk out and start your own ministries like you, we young men, without patience. You must wait until the day of your confirmation. May you be blessed, and God bless you all.